Good evening. Tonight is a very special presentation. Please hold your applause until all board members, staff, and guests have been welcomed. Board President Robin Mullet, District 13; Board Vice President Mike Dermon, District 3; Neil Henigan, District 1; Elizabeth Heinz, District 2; Charles Harrell, District 5; Michael Nation, District 6; Willie Jeter, District 7; Ron Bentencourt, District 10; Bob Womack, District 11; Richard Hershey, District 12; Dennis Cuzan, District 14; and Mary Cave Bellisario, District 15. Those are our board members. Thank you for being here. From Central Office and Satellite Offices, we have our Superintendent Trey Foltz; Pete Jabia, Associate Superintendent; Mike Cosay, Assistant Superintendent; we have several administrative and CNI supervisors and directors in the audience; curriculum specialists, coordinators, and teachers. But our special guest tonight, Ms. Peggy Sharp. Mrs. Sharp's mom, Mrs. Dorothea Perrin; Mr. Eddie Sharp, Peggy's husband; Mr. Rhett Sharp, Peggy's son, also a valuable member of our Channel 13 staff; Dr. Paulette Perrin, Peggy's sister and our science curriculum specialist; Ms. Vanessa Howell, Rhett's fiance; and one of Peggy's cousins, Ms. Cassie. I am Regina Sanford, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, the department where Peggy works. But however, this is normally Peggy's job, it's not mine. She is our resident emcee and hostess for many of these special presentations and board entertainment. But tonight was supposed to be a special surprise for Peggy to honor her many years of service to the students, parents, staff, and community members of St. Tammany Parish Public Schools. But Peggy, being the detail person that she is, had to ask many questions two days ago, so the cat sort of got out of the bag. But tonight is a tribute to Peggy. Also with us tonight, we have many St. Tammany Parish teachers and student alumni that I would like to recognize your talents. So at this time, we have Ms. Rosalyn Hansen, our incoming Fine Arts Supervisor.
Good evening. Ms. Sharp, before you leave, we want to thank you for your wisdom you've shared as a teacher, principal, and supervisor. Life and school can be a high-wire act. The trick is keeping your balance. Be wildly creative. Sometimes you need to really turn them on their heads. Bring home the bacon and the donuts, too. Thank you, Peggy, for your sweetness. Multitask, multitask, multitask. We've seen you do this, and you've taught us how to do this, too. Unlock the potential in others. As a leader, you've built capacity. You've helped to unlock our potential. Always stay one step ahead of the crowd and the students. Another great lesson you've taught us. Just say yes. Sign up for some serious monkey business. We've all signed up and are ready for some serious monkey business that comes in the daily lives of educators. You've helped us imagine the best in others, and we've been pleasantly surprised. You certainly have known this in your job. You have expanded the parameters of your job. The list kept growing and growing and growing. We know that sometimes things can get pretty messy, but you have helped us to try to make the best of a situation, and of course, to learn from it. And just like messy situations, the road can get bumpy. We now know the trick is to get right back on our bike and pop a wheelie. Maybe I shouldn't bring this up after last Thursday's board meeting, but rainy days? Who hasn't had rainy days? We know that we have friends like you, though, who can help get us through it. And when we hit a wall, we climb up and over. You've modeled compassion and understanding. You respect differences in others. School and life is so much more interesting because of that. You've taught us to improvise. There's more than one way to catch a fish. And thank goodness, we weren't expected to know it all. You've taught us that wisdom begins with being puzzled. With help from others, the pieces will fall into place. Begin each day ready to monkey around. Take time to smell the roses or eat a banana. A blank canvas is a brilliant opportunity. Paint your own tomorrow. It's a zoo out there, so keep your sense of humor. You've been the wind beneath our wings. Be the wind beneath your own. Go out and see all that you can see. Grab a seat. You don't want to miss a thing. And of course, come back and share with us. Read everything you can get your paws on. Take the road less traveled or the seas less traveled. Don't forget to hang loose. Use all your frequent flyer miles. Of course, you may have to build some up first, but use them all. Some restrictions may apply. And just like all great teachers, never stop teaching or learning. Keep curious. And lastly, remember that every ending is a bright new beginning.
At this time, we have a special song for Peggy. We have a group of St. Tammany Parish music teachers and St. Tammany Parish Public School alumni under the direction of Covington High School Choral and Music Director, Mr. Rick Watkins. Wow. If that was not special, I don't know what is. Thank you for sharing your talent with us. At this time, we have a special video that Channel 13 has prepared, so sit back and enjoy this video.
I loved teaching. I loved what I was doing. And then, all of a sudden, it's been 44 years. And just like that, I can't believe it, really.
And in those 44 years, Margaret Sharp, known to most as Peggy, has been a classroom teacher, a resource-helping teacher, a principal, and a supervisor, all the while sharing her talent, her skills, and her compassion with others.
When I think of Peggy, the warm heart comes to mind. She's always organized, dedicated to her job. She goes to extra mile, always considers kids first.
Having been in the classroom, she knew what the teachers were going through, and she knew she respected what they were doing and the problems that they might be having.
If you assign something to Peggy Sharp, you know it's going to be taken care of. You know it's going to be taken care of professionally, everything. You know, if you give her something with a parent, she'll handle that. If you give her something with a community member, which she's been tremendous.
From PTA to district-wide fundraisers to administrators' conferences, Peggy handled all of her tasks beautifully.
Hi, I'm Margaret Sharp. I'm principal of Fountain Blue Junior High School and-
But it was her role as principal during the opening of Fountain Blue Junior High School that really stands out.
Probably my favorite year was the year we opened Fountain Blue Junior. It was under such unusual circumstances. There were nothing but portable classrooms. That was it. There was no gym, there was no office, there was no library.
And it's not only her success at Fountain Blue Junior High, but her background in music and art that led to her move to Central Office as Supervisor of Fine Arts.
If there's a performance in the district, Peggy wants to be there. If it's an art show and students are displaying their work or a contest, those are the things that motivate and inspire Peggy.
The best part is being in charge of the Fine Arts program. The children, they're happy. They're always happy when they're doing their art, when they're singing, when they're playing their music.
Peggy serves on so many committees, it will be hard to keep track of all of the things that she does. We were looking at her list, and it was in excess of two pages, single-spaced.
From band concerts to choral festivals to dance programs to strings performances, Peggy organized it all, and that included school board entertainment.
Every board meeting, we have entertainment before. And it does start off, I say, "Good evening. Welcome to tonight's entertainment."
Good evening. Welcome to tonight's performance. Good evening.
If people were going to come and board members were going to be there, they needed to see what was happening in the schools. They needed to see how talented our students are.
Along with art and music, Peggy manages the district's fitness meet.
She gets so excited on that Saturday when those elementary students are participating in the fitness meets.
Runners to you, Mark!
The fitness meet started seven years ago. Mr. Foltz learned about it and called me over, and he said, "We're going to compete." This past year, we became, got second in the state, which is the best we've done so far.
She gets excited when we have state winners, and she does attend the state meets. And she then takes pictures.
And Peggy is known for her photographs, not just of the fitness meet students, but the pictures that she takes at just about every event she attends.
I really don't know how that started. I've always taken pictures. My theory on photography is if you take a thousand pictures, you're going to get one really good one.
Every event since I was a very small... Let me back up. If you go to our house, there are trunkfuls of photographs that she's gotten developed over the years of me, of my dad, of our entire family.
And some of those pictures will come on a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday night, early in the morning, so she's working all the time.
And it's her hard work that has touched the lives of everyone she has worked with throughout her 44 years as an educator, even her son, Rhett.
You know, she is my mom, and she's great, but I just think she has a really kind heart. And I think a lot of times that that comes through with the way that she carries herself and the way she, you know, talks to students and her colleagues. My mom is smart, talented. She's always been there for me when I needed her, and it's carried through the years.
And it's her willingness to help others that becomes part of her legacy.
Her legacy will be that support and cheerleader for each and every member of St. Tammany Parish. I think her legacy is her integrity. She always does the right thing.
I think her legacy will be all the different people she touched. I run into people all the time when I'm with Peggy that said, "You either taught me, or you're my assistant principal, or you're my principal."
All the way through Abida to Fountain Blue to being a supervisor, I think she's really been able to touch a lot of lives and do some really good things.
Looking back, I almost can't believe how lucky I've been or how blessed I've been to have the husband that I love, and he loves me, to have the light of my life, my son. My job has been what I wanted it to be. So yes, it's been a very rewarding, fulfilling life.
A rewarding, fulfilling life where the best is yet to come.
I'm excited about my retirement. My husband's been retired for three years, so he's been waiting for me to get to this point. Every morning I leave, he's sitting on the swing, and he waves by to me. And, you know, he's waiting for me when I get home. And so I'm anxious for that part of my life, just the two of us. And now, when I tell him I'm going to retire, what are we going to do? And he says, "We're going to have fun."
Peggy, in recognition of your service to St. Tammany Parish, the CNI supervisors have purchased a brick which will be inscribed and placed outside in Preservation Plaza to honor your work. Later tonight, Mr. Foltz has a special acknowledgement for you in the board meeting to document all of your service to our system. So I am inviting everyone to please join us at 7:00 in the boardroom. You will notice that we have cookies and punch for you as you mill about and visit with Peggy and wish her well wishes on her relaxing entertainment. And on a personal note, I have to say that I will miss you tremendously. Thank you.
Well, good evening. We thank everyone for being here for our meeting for St. Tammany Parish School Board for June 8, 2017. Could we have roll call, please, Ms. Coakley?
Mrs. Mullet?
Present.
Mr. Henigan?
Here.
Mrs. Heinz?
Here.
Mr. Dermon?
Here.
Mr. Loop?
Here.
Mr. Harrell?
Here.
Mr. Nation?
Here.
Mr. Jeter?
Here.
Mrs. Sealy?
Present.
Mrs. Drucker?
Here.
Mr. Bentencourt?
Here.
Mr. Womack?
Here.
Mr. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Cuzan?
Here.
Mrs. Bellisario?
Thank you. Would everyone please rise as Mrs. Heinz says the invocation and leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Would you bow your heads with me, please?
Heavenly Father, this evening, we come before you thankful for the past year's, uh, school year's success. We ask that you guide us as we plan for the coming year and that our students, their families, and our school system families have a safe and refreshing summer. Through you, all things are possible. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Heinz. Board members, do we have anyone that would like to recognize visitors tonight? Mr. Henigan?
I'd like to recognize Richard Zonbrecker, who I believe is running for... Alan, sorry. Richard, Alan. He's running for judge.
Thank you. Okay. Welcome. We did, we didn't, we did not have anyone for five minutes, but actually, we have to have Mr. Zonbrecker for three minutes. So, Mr. Zonbrecker.
Thank you, President Mullet, Superintendent Foltz, members of the board, and ladies and gentlemen. I'm Alan Zonbrecker. I'm a candidate for Judge Division H of the 22nd Judicial District Court. As you probably know, the 22nd Judicial District Court is made up of all of Washington and St. Tammany Parish, so all the citizens of Washington and St. Tammany vote. A special election will be held October 14 to fill two seats. The first that I'm running for is Division H. This was the seat formerly held by Judge Allison Pinzada, who was elected to the First Circuit Court of Appeal and moved up. The second is created by the retirement of Judge Bill Burris, so other people are running for that. If I could give you a very brief bio, I have been a resident of St. Tammany Parish for 38 years. I went to Tulane on a football scholarship, stayed and went to Tulane Law School, and then worked for 10 years, and went back and got a master's of law, also from Tulane School of Law. I've been a litigator my entire career. I practiced before courts all across the state of Louisiana, literally the four corners of the state, state and federal court. I have also been, for the past 18 years, a mediator. I help people settle their cases. I've mediated almost 2,000 cases successfully, which I think helps take some of the pressure off the dockets of the court. And I've also served for 12 years as an arbitrator. When people can't resolve their cases, they hire me to act as a judge. I hear evidence, I rule on objections, I rule on the case, I write an opinion. It is as if the same thing that a judge does. I've served as a Special Assistant Attorney General for the state of Louisiana for over 25 years, representing a number of state agencies, including Superdome Commission, which I served on the Superdome Commission as chairman in the Foster Administration. I also represent Wildlife and Fisheries and the Causeway Commission in litigation. When they get sued, I defend them. I've also served as an Assistant District Attorney in the 22nd JDC as a prosecutor for two years to gain some criminal experience. Other things beside the law that I do, I'm active in a number of boards and commissions. I've served on a number of state and local boards, including the Superdome Commission, as I said. I'm currently on the board of Safe Harbor. I'm on the board of the North Shore Food Bank, and I'm on the board of Mary Bird Perkins Cancer Center. Not only the local cancer center, but the whole Mary Bird Perkins system-wide, which is five different campuses. And those causes are very, very important to me. On a personal level, I've been married to the same woman for 38 years. We have three grown children and one super-grandchild, which I'm very proud of. A lot of people ask me, you know, "Why do you want to run for judge?" And I suspect that the reason I want to be a judge is similar to the same reason you want to serve in your capacity. I think we have a very, very special way of life in St. Tammany Parish. I genuinely do. And I want to find the best way that, based on my education, training, and experience, I can serve. I think that's probably the same reason you want to serve in your capacity. And that's why I want to be judge. So I thank you for the chance to come here tonight and introduce myself. I'm happy to answer any questions, either now or later. Feel free to contact me. I have a website, it's pretty easy to find. And other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you. You have a question?
How long were you a basketball official?
A long time. I've, I started in New Orleans, frankly, when I was in Tulane, at Tulane, Tulane and Tulane Law. And then, as I started my practice, I took 25 years off, raised kids until I couldn't coach them anymore. And then, I've been a member of the Hammond Basketball Official Association for 19 years. I've called many games with Dennis, so thank you.
Well, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to our agenda items tonight. We're going to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution giving preliminary approval to the issuance of general obligation school refunding bonds of St. Tammany Parish-wide school district number 12 of St. Tammany, state of Louisiana, making application to the State Bond Commission for approval of said bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. And tonight, thank you. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Nation and second by Mrs. Drucker. Do we have any comments from board members? Before that, could we, we do have Mr. Grant Schluter here to answer any questions that we may have.
Thank you. Grant Schluter with Foley Udel, Bond Counsel. And Stephanie Ferry is also here from Raymond James, the underwriter. We didn't think we'd be back here this quickly. Your last action recently was to approve the, preliminarily, the refunding of the Series 2010 issue, and that is underway now. Terry Prevost, the superintendent, and myself won a conference call today with Standing in Paws, and went very, very well, in part because Terry had submitted all the answers to the questions well in advance, which I had remarked to some folks is pretty unusual. And Standing in Paws loves that. So, very good conference call. We are very happy about that. But since that time, since you gave approval to the refinancing of the 2011, uh, 2010, the 2011's now work with the further decrease in interest rates. So, we thought we'd come to you, present it, at least get it started, and see if we can get these two transactions done while rates are still favorable. It is a refinancing of the 2011 issue. Projected savings is well over $400,000 net of all costs to taxpayers, in excess of 4% present value savings. State Bond Commission requirement is 3%, so you're well above that. The outstanding bonds have interest rates up to 4.75%. True interest cost on the new issue today is closer to 2.5%, so that would be a substantial reduction. There is no extension of the maturity, so you're simply reducing your payments each year, all savings accrued to the taxpayers. We did do a sensitivity analysis, because Mr. Henigan has asked that we do this on each occasion. The underwriter has run that with a one-year delay. You can only absorb a 12-basis-point increase before you start losing money on the projected savings. If you wait all the way until the first call date when the bonds can be redeemed, the 2011 bonds can be redeemed, which is March 1 of 2021, you can absorb a 61-basis increase. Now, just to recap on the total savings again, because we had that for you at the last meeting, you've undertaken a number of refinancings. You've saved significant amount to taxpayers over the years since 2004. If the 2010, which you approved recently, and the 2011, which you're considering approving today, if those are successfully done and interest rates hold for a little bit longer, your total savings net of all costs to taxpayers- your total savings net of all costs to taxpayers will be approximately 11.4 million. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Nation.
Little, little off top.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. No, I, uh, thank you for the information. I, I, this is a little off subject, but I, we talked about it and I didn't write it down. We've reduced our mileage for both operations and these bond payments. You, what's the total?
Nine mils.
Total?
Nine mils for the debt service mileage.
And how about for the operating?
Um, I don't have that with me, but I believe in total, I'll have to get that to you. I don't have that with me.
The total, I thought, was about 26, and I-
I think it's 22.04.
22.04, okay, that's good, thank you.
22.04. Approximately.
That's why the credit rating agency likes her.
That's why we love her. Mr. Henigan, are you finished? All questions? Mr. Nation.
All right, very good. And I bet if we asked her to extend the decimal, you know, point out, you know, to the third or fourth, she'd probably do that, too. Grant, thank you again for the work you do for us. It's just because it bears worth repeating, I think, and I asked you this question, I've asked you this question before, how is it that this board is able to, to get such good interest rates?
A double A rating.
That's right. And how do we get that double A rating?
You do it by handling your finances properly, having a substantial fund balance, reserve fund, and you have consistently shown improvement year after year, and Standing in Paws recognizes that. Only a handful of school boards have the double A rating, and the only thing holding it back is retirement and OPEB. But on the conference call today, Standing in Paws was very happy to hear that you're doing some advanced refunding by trust with respect to those, with the OPEB obligations, and they thought that was a very favorable development. Very few school boards have started that process.
Excellent.
I know of two, actually, DeSoto, when the Haynesville Shell money was very plentiful at that point in time, and I think Cato has also started a, a trust fund and started to advance fund OPEB.
And could you define that for us or for the public?
All the post-employment benefits.
Gotcha. Now, with the retirement piece, that's not a piece that we ultimately have any control over, is it?
Yes, that's correct.
And who does have control over that?
State.
State legislature.
And Terry has information on that.
Got you.
Yeah.
All right, very good. All right, thank you, Grant. I think that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Durman.
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. Mr. Schluter, these bonds would actually become mature at what time? Is it 2031? Well, I thought he said we couldn't pay them off until-
The final maturity is March 1 of 2030.
2030?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this would continue those payments out, and that's where the savings would come is all the way through that timeframe?
The call, first call on this bond issue is March 1 of 2021. We will advance refund the callable maturities of that bond issue, and we will escrow the proceeds in treasuries that will pay the principal and interest on those bonds through March 1, 2021, when we will exercise the option to retire that bond issue.
Okay.
In advance in 2021.
So we're actually cutting the 10 years off of that bond issue as well?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions from board members, any comments from the public? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Schluter, for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next, we're going to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution authorizing Superintendent Foles and/or Board President Mullet to execute, uh, to execute documents completing the sale of St. Tammany Parish School Board property located at 406 East Boston Street, Covington, Louisiana 70433. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Durman, second by Ms. Heinz. Do we have any comments or questions from board members? Seeing none, do we have any comments from the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Thank you. Next, we have approval of minutes for the regular meeting held May 18, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Okay, Ms. Seeley, seconded by Mr. Loop. Any questions or comments from board members? Comments from the public?
Abstained.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained? Ms. Seeley? So ordered. All right, next, appropriate retirement resolution for the following certificated personnel subsequent to May 18, 2017. Mr. Jabia.
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. Bridget O. Smolcich, Avni Elementary, 26.53 years, 20 years in St. Tammany Parish. Patricia P. Coy, Boyett Junior High, 37.74 years, 25.35 years in St. Tammany Parish. The next one has been withdrawn, and we will not read that one. Margaret P. Sharp, Central Office, 44 years, 42.56 years in St. Tammany Parish. Mary T. Barnes, Folsom Junior High, 36.46 years, 25.96 years in St. Tammany Parish. Mary W. Belong, Fountain Blue High, 38.50 years, 24 years in St. Tammany Parish. Timothy W. Snyder, Fountain Blue Junior High, 34 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Leslie N. Chastenall, Harrison Curriculum Center, 28.01 years, 10.88 years in St. Tammany Parish. Brenda H. Geyer, Harrison Curriculum Center, 22 years, 16 years in St. Tammany Parish. Bonnie H. Infostado, Harrison Curriculum Center, 28 years, 23 years in St. Tammany Parish. Mary B. Winter, Harrison Curriculum Center, 37.50 years, 33.50 years in St. Tammany Parish. Tressa M. Laird, Leroy Junior High, 17 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Charlotte W. Siple, Magnolia Trace Elementary, 29 years, 13 years in St. Tammany Parish. Babette J. Bilio, Mandeville High, 31.76 years, 21.94 years in St. Tammany Parish. Anne S. Stevens, Mandeville Middle, 35.56 years, 29 years in St. Tammany Parish. Patricia A. DeSante, Montleone Junior High, 25.83 years, 7.83 years in St. Tammany Parish. Ruth M. Broome, Sladeo Pupil Appraisal, 25.02 years, 19.30 years in St. Tammany Parish. Janine J. Miller, Sladeo Pupil Appraisal, 20.39 years, 15.37 years in St. Tammany Parish. Eric S. Sax, Whispering Forest Elementary, 35 years, 25 years in St. Tammany Parish.
Second. Moved by Mr. Durman, seconded by Mr. Jeter. Questions from board members? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Next, we have appropriate retirement resolutions for the following non-certified personnel subsequent May 18, 2017. Mr. Jabia.
Thank you. Katrina W. Fusell, Fifth Ward Junior High, 14.25 years, 12.48 years in St. Tammany Parish. Taggart L. Modicek, Leroy Junior High, 14.08 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Robin H. Shmentow, Salmon High, 12.72 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Christine S. Wheeler, Whispering Forest Elementary, 26.64 years, all in St. Tammany Parish.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Womack? Mr. Hershey? Seconded that? Questions from board members? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Thank you, Mr. Jabia, I appreciate you doing that for me. Next is approve, approval of recommendations for the committee as a whole, meeting administrative and business affairs, held June 1. Mr. Nation, do you have that report for us?
Thank you, Madam President, we do. We have four recommendations tonight. Our first is to recommend acceptance of the collective bargaining agreement relative to the salary and reopener clause.
Okay, so I have Mr. Durman and second Ms. Seeley. We have any questions, comments from board members? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Oh, I'm sorry, was that? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm sorry, Ms. Green, I didn't, I had you for the, for some reason, I had you for the
Good evening.
Good evening.
To President Mullet, Superintendent Foles, the distinguished board members, I stand on behalf of the St. Tammany Federation of Teachers and School Employees and all collective, the whole collective bargaining unit. I rise to ask that you please approve this proposal before you. St. Tammany Federation, nominating team, I'm sorry, it's been a long week.
It's okay.
Nominating team, as long as, along Mr. Jabia and Mr. Coase, we have worked diligently to come up with something that we feel that is reasonable, fair, and equitable for our employees, and we ask that you please take it into consideration, and we thank you in advance for your vote.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I whipped through that. Do, are any, do we have any questions from board members? Okay. And no other comments from the public. Thank you, Ms. Green, I appreciate that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Okay, our second recommendation to the board is to recommend acceptance of the employee's salary schedule for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
So moved. Charles?
Second.
And Mr. Jeter? Seconded that? Do we have any questions from, or comments from board members? Ms. Bellisario?
I've been on the board a long time, and I do have a question. After we vote on this, will the members of the various bargaining units get a chance to vote?
Yes. Sorry, they must ratify this. I think they're meeting Tuesday night, is that correct, Ms. Green? Tuesday night for ratification.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, what would happen if they turn it down? Would-
If the, if the members did not vote in favor of it?
Right.
It would revert back to the previous schedule that was in effect, the frozen salary schedule.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Durman.
Yeah, just kind of a follow-up, and I just want to, you know, commend Mr. Foles and Ms. Jabia and the staff, and also the union reps for working together to try to come up with what is a fair and equitable adjustment to this salary schedule. As many of us may or may not remember, we've been operating under, you know, MFP budgets, funding that comes to us that's been erratic and actually declining, and a lot of our salaries have been frozen because of that, and this is an effort to try to balance that, excuse me, that effect that, that's occurred over the last several years. So, again, I think it simplifies our salary schedule, it identifies it much easier for all our employees to see, both our teachers and support staff. I think it's a, I think it's a win-win for everybody, and definitely in favor of it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durman. Any other questions or comments from board members? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered. Thank, excuse me, real quick, Mr. Nation, I think Mr. Foles has a-
Mr. Nation, go first.
No, he was just going to go next. Do you have a comment?
Yes. I just, too, wanted to thank Mr. Jabia and Mr. Coase and our team, as well as Ms. Debbie Green and her team. This is something, as Debbie mentioned, that they've been working on with us for quite some time. We certainly realize the importance of it, and, and as I go around the state, I realize even more and more that the relationship we have with our federation is special, and because of that, we're able to come together and come up with something that we think we can all support. So I want to publicly thank Debbie and her team, as well as Mr. Pete and our team, and hopefully Tuesday will work out fine, and we can all do something I think that our employees will benefit from, so thank you all very much.
Mr. Nation.
Okay. Number three is to recommend acceptance of school board policies, sections J, S, and D, and I call on Mr. Jabia.
Thank you, Ms. Nation. The staff has been working with the board on the student fees, which is filed J, S, and we do have a revision from what you approved last week's meeting. The last sentence requires that a waiver process shall be communicated in advance of the start of the school year. We did add to that, and it's for your approval for tonight, that that waiver process be only for fees other than the general student fee. That shall be communicated in advance of the start of the school year and ask for your approval of that tonight, and there's been no changes to Section D. That was the only change.
Okay.
Okay, so you're recommending a motion for J, S, and D with the changes that you just mentioned.
With the change that I just made, mentioned, yes.
Ms. Mary Kay?
Yes.
Okay.
One second.
One second.
And you, second.
Okay. Ms. Bellisario made the motion, I'm sorry, Ms. Seeley had seconded, sorry about that. Questions, Mr. Kuzan?
Does that mean that the entire fee will not be waived if someone cannot afford it?
You want to answer that?
The general fee is not mandatory. There are other fees that are choice or options, so we're saying that the general fee is the one that would not require the waiver process, because it's not mandatory. Other fees, the family could go through the waiver process.
But not the general fee?
The general fee is not mandatory.
Does not require a waiver?
So wouldn't require a waiver? It's, it's to the benefit.
Do I have any other questions or comments from board members? Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
And our final recommendation is to recommend acceptance to purchase coverage through Arthur J. Gallagher and Riverlands Insurance Services for property, primary and excess liability, crime, boiler, and machinery, workers' compensation, and NFIP in the amount of $1,500,815.57.
I have a motion by Mr. Womack, seconded by Ms. Strucker. Any comments from board members? Question, comment?
Can I go a little better on this?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kuzan?
Was Gallagher a low bidder on this?
Yes.
Thank you.
All of these were low bidders.
Okay. We presented the numbers last week.
Yeah, the numbers were given to you last week. I'm sorry if they're not in your packet.
Ms. Strucker, you had a question?
I just want to commend Pete in our, in our committee that actually were able to reduce the amount of insurance, or the cost of insurance, not the coverage. And so, Pete, can you share with us how much we're saving compared to last year?
We are saving $103,328.21, and since 2012, we've saved the board and taxpayers $860,000 with the same amount of coverage.
Great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
Comments from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
And Madam President, that concludes our report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Nation, I appreciate that. Next, we have certification of board members. Neil M. Henigan, Elizabeth B. Heinz, Michael J. Durman, Stephen J. Jack Luke III, Charles T. Harold, Michael C. Nation, Willie B. Jeter- T. Harold, Michael C. Nation, Willie B. Jeter, Peggy H. Seeley, Sharon L. Drucker, Robin P. Mullet, Dennis S. Cuzan, and Mary Kay Bellisario, in completion of one hour of training for 2017, presented on June 1, 2017, as mandated by the Louisiana Revised Statute 1753. Mr. Foles?
Thank you, Ms. Mullet. I do indeed certify that the above-named board members did participate and complete the presentation and training as noted on June 1.
Thank you. Well, this brings us to our special recognition tonight, and boy, do we have a special lady here that everyone is truly going to miss. Superintendent Foles?
Thank you, Ms. Mullet, board members. First of all, let me say a thank you to Regina and her crew for putting together tonight's reception, and also they've gone, but a special thank you to the singers from tonight, from Covington High and other schools, employees across the parish. It was, it was really nice and special. Tonight is Peggy Sharp's final school board meeting in her official capacity as supervisor of fine arts. Peggy is retiring at the end of this month with 44 years of educational experience and unmeasurable influence on the lives of many, many Saint Tammany students. Peggy's educational journey started in Saint Tammany at Lee Road Junior High School as a classroom teacher, then shifted to Abita Springs Junior High as a teacher, RHT, and eventually their principal. Peggy moved south when Fountain Blue Junior High was built, serving as the school's first principal. She has started many traditions at Fountain Blue Junior, including being the host site for many job fairs, putting up with Mr. Javi on those job fairs for many years, and she also created the Students Showcase Hurricane Highlights, which has continued to this day and also duplicated at all of our other junior highs across the parish. Twelve years ago, hard to believe, but 12 years ago Peggy was named Fine Arts Supervisor at the central office. Her hand has guided many district endeavors over the years: art competitions, band festivals, string performances, hiring itinerary teachers, elementary fitness meets, Katrina donations, district fundraisers, multi-group parades, administrators' conference, open house schedule, board meeting entertainment, community events. We could go on and on all night long. However, it is not about the what. It's not about the many things that Peggy has accomplished, because if you would ask Peggy, she would tell you she was only doing her job. But it is about the impact that Peggy has made, and how her attention to the small details has made such a big difference throughout her career. Peggy's background helps to paint a picture that explains why she has excelled in her career. At a very young age, Peggy's family instilled in her values on how to live her life. Her father was a veteran who understands the value in service, shared that passion with all four of his children. Peggy's mom had a passion for education, and even served as a substitute teacher after the four children, Phyllis, Bobby, Paulette, and Peggy, became adults. And if you saw her mom tonight, she was holding the baby when they, when they fried off the bed, so she's still got the touch. At Southeastern, Peggy was a major rett, but at home, the passion for music came from her family. Piano, trumpet, and violin were instruments that she grew up with as a child. Peggy took those lessons of service and education and the passion for music and wrapped them into one amazing, brilliant career. So tonight, with a mixture of joy and sadness, we bid Peggy best wishes in her retirement. Peggy and her husband Eddie have a list of hobbies and plans which will fill their days: gardening, traveling on vacations that she never had the time to take, a quick knee surgery, and spending quality time with family. Peggy was also busy running errands with her mom, who is with us here tonight, 95 years old. Welcome, thank you for being here tonight. Who knows, after Peggy gets that knee fixed, maybe her mom will take her to her daily exercise classes as she goes every day. One thing we know for sure, all those special moments will always be captured in photos by Peggy. As you know, she's never without her camera, and she told me that she plans to keep that hobby up into retirement. So tonight, I want to say a big thank you to all of Peggy's family that is here, sharing with us, and letting Saint Tammany Parish school system take up her time and her talents for all these many years. So I'm gonna ask her family members to stand: her sister, her mom, her husband, and Rhett, and Rhett's fiance. I didn't know if I could say that or not, you know, so... To Peggy, to Peggy Sharp, as I always call, every time I call on the phone, to Peggy Sharp, you have created many lasting memories for all of us, who have had the pleasure of working hand-in-hand with you to make a positive mark in the lives of our students, the community, and the school system. All of us, we love you, and we will miss you tremendously. God bless you, and thank you for not only being an educator, but for being our friend for all these many years. We love you, God bless you. Thank you.
Dr. Sanford, I think you'd like to go to the podium?
Very blessed to have a tremendous team of supervisors surrounding me: curriculum specialists, instructional coaches, all of our staff. They're absolutely wonderful. We're very blessed in Saint Tammany Parish. And to my personal friend Peggy, I am going to miss you tremendously. So, this is a small token. It's a unique piece of pottery that an artist has created using real leaves, and every time that you see this in your house, I want you to think of us. And I believe that her son also has a presentation as well.
Ah, how nice.
So Peggy is never speechless, so at this point, we'll ask her to say some parting words. Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Foles and board members. My goal tonight is to get through the next few minutes without crying, and to thank Thank you for the lovely surprise reception tonight. I will remember it always. Forty-four years ago, I began my teaching career in a summer school in Tancho Parish. After one year in Saint Alina Parish, Mr. Dick Clanton offered me a job at Lee Road Junior High, where Lenny Montleone was my neighbor teacher down the hall, and Mr. Bill Barker was my principal. I then moved to Abita Junior High. After that, and taught there for 18 years, Mr. Lee Abear was my principal. That magical little artistic town embraced me and helped me develop my creative side. After being principal at Abita Junior High for four years, I was part of the grand adventure of opening Fountain Blue Junior High. That year that we opened Fountain Blue Junior was the hardest, most rewarding year of my life. Our theme was "United We Stand," and that's the only way we were able to survive. I spent eight exciting and wonderful years helping that school become a reality before handing it over to the capable hands of Dr. Tim Snyder and his staff. I would like to thank all of the students that I have taught throughout the years. While I was teaching you, you were teaching me. I truly love my students and have enjoyed watching them grow up and become such things as community leaders, doctors, musicians, first responders, parents, now grandparents, teachers, and principals. All of the colleagues I have worked with at schools along the way have become like family. I enjoyed watching, working with so many educators and support staff, and becoming friends with all of them. While I certainly can't name them all, I treasure each one. And I would especially like to remember my good friends Jenna Slay, Donna Addison Harvin, and one of my former students who grew up to be my right hand as counselor at Fountain Blue Junior High, Karen Caddy. And the two secretaries I had both at Abita Junior and Fountain Blue Junior, Ms. Pat Bridges and Ms. Jeanette Karambat, who followed me to central office. Twelve years ago, I became the fine art supervisor for our parish, following in the footsteps of Dr. June Paul. I would like to thank her for the many years of dedication to the arts and to the children of Saint Tammany. She made my job easier by helping to instill a love of arts to all of the schools in the district. I have been able to continue this artistic passage with the support of some of the finest musicians and artists as teachers in the country. You heard some of them tonight. As well as with the help of Debbie Lafore and Donna Laurent in the Talented Arts Program, Meredith Mendez and her group, and Dr. Melody Menard and the team at Channel 13, who make sure our talented students are able to share their talents with the world. And I would be remiss without thanking my secretary all these years, Vanessa Williams, for her hard work and dedication. As a supervisor, I've had the great fortune to work with support staff, teachers, curriculum teams, administrators, supervisors, board members, and superintendents. The camaraderie and support that we all have shared is beyond compare. When my dear friend Dennis Sharp retired, he left... He left me to inherit the physical education duties. Along, along with that, I began my working relationship with Kay Hershey, who has been a tremendous help and a friend on a daily basis. My Diamond Central Office would not have been nearly as informational or fun without the close working relationship I've had with Mr. Javi and Mr. Kose. While both are a wealth of knowledge, they are also two of the funniest human beings on the face of the earth. I would like to thank all of the supervisors and board members who are here tonight, as well as those that are no longer on active duty, as each of you have been an inspiration in your own way. And I've been truly blessed to have the best curriculum bosses in the world: Dr. Margot Galat, Gail Sloan, Cheryl Araby, and Dr. Sanford. You have been so supportive in all of my endeavors and wild ideas, and I'm proud to call each of you my friend. And Superintendent Foles, I want to thank you for something you said to me about 15 years ago. I don't know if you remember, but we, I was a principal and you were supervisor, and we were at a district PTA meeting at Whispering Forest Elementary one night. You pulled me aside, and you said, "I have a job for you." I said, "What is it?" And you said, "I want you to become a supervisor one day." And really, before that night, I had not been thinking along those lines. And here we are, 15 years later, I'm proud to say, you're still calling me aside and saying, "Peggy Sharp, I have a job for you."
As late as yesterday.
Because of your visions that you have wanted for the children of Saint Tammany Parish, I have been able to work on many, many interesting projects. I have met some very inspiring people, and I feel a sense of pride by working with you on the fundraising efforts that have been, that have helped numerous organizations and individuals throughout the years. It has been quite a ride. But now, I'm stepping back to hand over the reins of my duties to a principal and friend who I know will do a tremendous job: our new fine arts supervisor, Rosalyn Hanson. I wish her only the best, and excited to see what the future holds for the many talented students and teachers under her leadership. Finally, I need to thank the people who have made up the fabric of who I am: my family. While I have one brother, Bobby, who helped jumpstart my early growing years in Punchetula, it is my two sisters, who are also educators, who I look up to as mentors and educational partners. One, Dr. Phyllis Wilcox, lives in Albuquerque and is a university professor. The other is my friend and science curriculum specialist, Dr. Paulette Perrin. It has been wonderful working and living in the same community with my sisters. I'm not crying. And still, living in Punchetula in the house that my daddy built the same year that I was born, is my mother, Dorothea Reese Perrin, who I am very proud to say is here with us tonight. As a poet, a writer, a sign language interpreter, a genealogist, and a self-taught teacher, she has been an inspiration to me and to many others. She has taught me that always, always, the glass is half-full, never half-empty. And although my daddy, Robert Perrin, is no longer with us, his public service positions, such as veteran, by chief, town councilman, and parish civil defense director, certainly taught me the value of working with community partners and teaching me to pitch in and help, no matter the task. I thank everyone who has worked closely with me along with my educational journey, but the two people I have to give the most thanks to are my son and my husband. My son Rhett lived his entire childhood on a school campus, not just during school hours, but during summer vacation, on weekends, and even during hurricanes. I like to think that his inside view of the educational system has been put to good use as he creates videos highlighting the events of our school system. And I thank him for not complaining too much about his childhood. I'm also proud to say that Rhett is here tonight with his new fiancee, Vanessa Howell. Interestingly enough, Vanessa's mother was also a school principal. And last on my list to thank is my dear husband, Eddie. We were newlyweds when I started working at Lee Road all those years ago, and he built our house. And he has stuck around. He has been so supportive, encouraging me every step of the way, and never complaining about my many long days spent at school, his many hours helping me chaperone junior high dances or football games, or the fact that we don't go anywhere, that I don't see a former student or teacher, and I have to stop and reminisce with them. But now, he is ready for me to spend some time with him. When I ask him what we are going to do, he says, "We're gonna have fun," and I'm gonna hold him to that. Thank you all, love you, and God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Well, we have announcements from, from me, from the president. Special board meeting will be followed tonight's meeting for the purpose of the superintendent's annual performance review. So the meeting will be an executive session. Central office and satellite offices will be closed Monday, July 3, and Tuesday, July 4, for Independence Day. The next committee as a whole meeting will be Thursday, July 6. Also, I have an announcement tonight. Congratulations to Jack Loop. He was nominated by Hugh Kraft to serve on LSBA, and he was approved by the LSBA Exec Board, so he will start working on the, for representing us on LSBA, and I think that's just fabulous. No further business. Meeting is adjourned, and we'll start in about five minutes. No further business, meeting is adjourned, and we'll start in about five minutes.